Um, I shared, we shared, and we didn't have enough time to share to my left. But, and it's such an individual thing, so I'm not going to represent everybody. Really, so it's very individual. It came out for us. My thought was, took me to when I was in third grade, and that was in Mountain Home, Idaho. But it doesn't matter where we are, it's what the teacher did. And she gave it to me to make a decision. So it was my decision. I was responsible for what I was going to decide upon. And at the time, it was, it was a recess time, and I wanted to either play with the boys or play with the girls. And I had played with the girls, but I found it boring. And I saw the guys like running around and having a really good time. So she had me decide. She said, you know, they play different. They play very rough. So just that you know that if you make that decision, that's what's going to, you know, you're going to confront. I said, okay. Well, I went and I played with the boys. That year, I broke my wrist, chipped my two front teeth. So that was the price I paid, but it was my decision. I had no one to go off and complain about, you know, and go, oh, I'm... And I thought that process was really important for me, even up until today. Thank you.
Is there anybody on this side of the room who wants to share their experience? Awesome. We've got two folks here.
My name is Matthew Martinez, and I went to a small school in West Texas, Hobbs Independent School District, and there were only five people in my class. So we were like a family. That's kind of my school experience.
Wonderful, thank you. APS does a little bit bigger than that.
Well, the most important part for me is I have eight students in APS that graduated four or out before our end still. And to me, the only thing that changes is we'd had a Navajo learning program when my kids were at La Mesa, and to me, that made a big difference. Uh, it changes the way they think and the way they talk, and they're trilingual. So to me, without the school district and people that do care, it's assigned to teachers that go to those schools. I know there's not enough funding now to do it, but back then, it meant a lot to me. And my kids, uh, my daughter is graduating at U N M. My other one's at C N N. They're all honor students. But it's people that do care make a difference. And my kids, uh, at my home, I'm with them. Wherever they are, I'm with them. I'm going partying, Dad? I'll be right there. That's bull crap. You know why the system is messed up? Because people, you gotta, when your kids are in school, you watch them every dang minute. It takes one minute. I had three nephews get killed already this, in three years. You watch them where they go, when they leave that damn house, you're there. I don't care. If you say, I gotta work. I say, my kid at a party? I'm there. When he's going to somebody's field trip, I'll be there. I'll park in the parking lot till he gets out. You know, but I'm just saying, if you do care about your kids and you're willing to sacrifice your life for them, the difference that you make in this community and these kids will make a big difference. And a lot of them, the math scores, like my daughter was failing math. So one of them I took to E Academy, and they learned her math. And if the scores are really low, they don't like help you. They're trying to, but they don't have enough teachers. But the math scores, if the curriculum would be a lot easier for them to learn, they'll succeed. But that's the only thing that would come up. But I thought I would try you. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we move on. Okay. So thank you for helping us to start on a positive note. And now we are going to shift to how APS makes sure that students today have those same kind of special experiences. And it's not up on the slide yet, but there, I'm going to give a quick overview of what we plan to share tonight. And what I have on my script is welcome and introductions, APS goals, overview of APS budget, the role of the budget, priorities discussion, questions, and then we will thank you so much for being here. And obviously, that's not what's up there, but I apologize for the lack of coordination there. School budgets are complicated. We've got operational versus capital, sources of money, ways the money is used. And so our goal as a board is just like the discussion you shared, making sure every student has the chance for those memorable school experiences while working within limited resources. To understand how we do that, here's a quick overview from our chief financial officer, CFO, Renette Albedaka.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, board member. And I'm going to say it again, school budgets are complicated. Money comes from several sources: state, federal government, local taxes, bonds, and grants. And each pot of money has rules. For example, some funds can only pay for teacher salaries, and some can go for buses and buildings. Think about it like your own household budget. You might have one account for housing, another for groceries, and another one for gas. And you can't always move money from one to another. The finance team must follow strict laws and regulations for every dollar spent. Most importantly, every part of our budget supports our four APS goals and aligns with our strategic plan for student outcomes. APS is funded by enrollment. How many of you knew that? That it's funded by enrollment? Yeah? Over the past 10 years, our district, like many urban school districts nationwide, have seen a steady decline in student enrollment. This decline in enrollment directly affects our funding, which is largely based on student headcount. Fewer students means fewer dollars, even as the cost of maintaining buildings, transportation, and staffing may increase. While the numbers are concerning, our goal is not only to manage enrollment decline responsibly, but to build a stronger, more responsive school system for the students we serve today and in the future. The APS budget. This current slide, this current table, is our current budget, and it's 2.2 billion. With operational funds representing 48.5%, that's that area in blue, and capital funds, 29.3%, which is that area shaded in brown. Funding sources: operational, capital funds, grants, food service, transportation, instructional materials. Let's take a quick look at the different types of funds that make up the APS budget. We often get questions about, where did some money come from? How's it spent? What can and can't be used for? So here's a quick breakdown. Operational funds are what we use day-to-day needs, like paying for staff, keeping the lights on, buying supplies. Almost all of this money, 97% of it, comes from the state. Capital funds. These come from voter-approved taxes and are strictly for things like building repairs, new schools, technology upgrades. By law, they can't be used for teacher salaries. We also receive grants, which is extra dollars from the state, federal government, and private groups. These are usually for a specific program, and they do have expiration dates with them. Other dedicated funds cover things like school meals, funded by federal and state programs, student transportation, that's that is paid by the state, classroom materials like textbooks, that is also funded by the state. Operational funds. This is the 48% of the APS budget. And about 2/3 of these funds go directly to schools. They mostly pay for teachers, education assistance, school-level support. And the rest of it does support central services to make sure things run smoothly. We'll be talking about this tonight. Capital funds. Capital funds are voter-approved taxes that are crucial for maintaining and improving schools. Up here, you'll see we have information on H B 33, which we could use for new construction, additions, major repairs. Also, we talk about S B 9, which can be used for maintenance, technology, equipment. And then general obligation bonds, or G O bonds, which are used for big projects, like new classroom blocks or H VAC replacements. These funds keep our buildings safe and functional, and they can't be used for salaries or classroom programs. This is another one of the funds we'll talk to you about tonight. In fact, voters are going to the polls as we speak to vote on G O bonds to help fund bigger items like safety, H VAC, and buildings. Now, I would like to turn the presentation back over to Board Member Benavides.
In a few minutes, we'll show you the results of a recent survey asking families, staff, and community members what they think APS should focus on in next year's budget. But first, let's talk about the Board of Education's goals that guide all of our work. A couple of years ago, the Board asked our community a simple but important question: What do you want your children to know and be able to do? The answers were clear. Every student reading and doing math at grade level. Every student prepared for college and career. Every student developing the skills, habits, and mindsets for life success. We turn these answers into four goals that shape the work of our district every day. Budget priorities. Keeping these goals in mind, take a minute to turn to the person next to you and talk about what you think APS should focus its budget on. There is no right or wrong answer. Just talk amongst yourselves and decide what you think is most important. We'll take about five minutes for this discussion. Look forward to it. All right, about 30 more seconds, and then we'll share. Okay. Sounds like there were some good discussions happening out there. Would anyone like to share a priority or two from their table? Awesome. Thank you.
We talked about out-of-school-time activities. So she's in elementary school, and they start at 9:15. So they do before school. But also for other schools, access to after-school activities.
Wonderful, so we talked about.
Yeah, helping teachers be amazing, fantastic teachers.
Another great one.
So what we, it was interesting, the first thing that came up was safety. That's exactly what you all were saying, so. We have an idea of watchdog group. I don't know if anyone has heard of that or knows what it is. You want to speak a little bit on that?
It's when a group of parents actually patrol the perimeters of the schools, things like that, to make sure that there are no imminent threats. They walk around, they watch all of the different areas that are accessible. I was thinking that at some point, there could be a use of the volunteer military people, ex-police officers, anyone that has training, that could volunteer their time, that would be willing to volunteer their time. That way, that money could be allocated to pay the teachers more and have more access for the kids that need special services. My children are autistic. I've been trying to find proper services for them for years, and we need money because the children that are autistic, and especially the non-verbals or the violent children, they're not getting the services that they need. The teachers are not being trained properly, which is putting them in danger, which will in turn cost additional money if something were to happen, if someone were injured on the job. It's all about training. I mean, the training, that should be an automatic reason for there to be more money. There should be more access for what's really needed, and it's, I just can't see it. We're the 50th in the state, and my kids have suffered there in the school. They're in the third grade. I've been trying to find proper outlets and counseling for them through the school and through the state for the last four years. I finally had a little bit of a breakthrough the other day, but to come to find out that the people that are specialized and needed in these training areas are not available, or they have to be outsourced and paid for by the school out of their grant money in order to be brought in and used on a needed basis, and there's just not enough of them. And kids are suffering. Teachers are suffering. Instructors are suffering. And safety is one thing, but I mean, we need safety, and we need training and understanding for what's going on for our kids that have special needs.
Thank you for sharing. What's your name, ma'am?
My name is Latasha Embry.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
And another thing we talked about was having more teachers and E As, and in fact, having E As available in the general ed classroom. This is, this is a need. This is a definite need. Kids are suffering. We're not looking at the school environment that it was 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. We're not, that's not the reality. It's a different reality right now, so we need to step up the bat. That's all. And you know, when I, when I look at a budget that's at such a big organization, I'm not, personally, I'm not going to say, okay, we need more money. I'm not going to say that. But I'm going to say, clean up the budget that we have. Take a look, tighten it where you need to, maybe then after that, and these needs are brought up and considered, then we rearrange. We go home, back to APS, and we see all the different departments, and where can we tighten up the budget? I'm not going to ask for more money. No. But I want to know that the money that we have is well-budgeted. That's all. So more teachers, E As, training, we talked about, and the services for teachers and students, and that's, that's what was talked about, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anybody else want to share their priorities? We've had some good ones. I know there's other opinions out there. We'd love to hear them.
Well, a lot of the students in APS are usually good students, and all they want to do is learn. And there's teachers out there that do care about these kids, they will learn. But a lot of the programs are being cut because of a lack of money, like they were saying. And if they would find a way, even to budget out like one teacher for their special programs per week, at least it's better than nothing. And the way they could trim the budget of APS too is a lot of the private contractors going to a school. I was worked for a school for a long time for the C W A Union. I was the vice president for APS for a while till I got voted out, but you know how it goes. But what it is, is a lot of the outside contractors come in, and they do a job that could take APS employees half that time. And they're dragging, I used to tell them, you know, you guys ain't here for 10 days to do one project. You get it done and get out. They didn't like me then, but I, they didn't know who I was. And they go, who are you? I said, well, I'm the C W A Union Vice President, and I know what's going on. I, I know, I work with them, and I see them. But if you could cut a lot of that stuff that those guys are doing, and they go do this job, and they go to the school, and they take a month to do a job that the guys could do in a week, that don't make no sense. That's like throwing away money. I thought I would let you know, because that could cut down, because you got to watch them, because they do, they do use the money and just don't do nothing. I used to get mad, and they go, Eric, can I do filters? I said, how long? There's only 20 units, and it takes you two months to do those units? Come on, guys, get four guys up there and get it done in two hours. I said, guys, I was a tech, and I know how long it takes. So that kind of thing will help, you know, help the people.
Thank you for sharing. We have a few more minutes. Anybody else? This is your chance. Tell us how to spend the money.
At my table, I brought up the idea of student engagement. And when we talked about student engagement, the, the kids think that school's boring. The parents think that it's the teachers' fault. The teachers think that it's the parents' fault for failing to inculcate, you know, a proper culture of education within the kids. And I don't think it's really important to distinguish who's right, but we do need to work on this. So for example, last year, we, you know, following up on the state bill, H B 171, we tried to find ways for, to get the kids to, you know, take more ownership of their education. I know that there are conversations, Gabriela, about the academies, and whether or not the academies are going to do it. All of these things are designed to increase student engagement. Are they working? I'm not sure. But that is everything that we need to do, is find ways to get kids re-engaged after having some disengagement, I think, during the pandemic experience, and disengagement beforehand. But I think it was exacerbated during the pandemic experience. And thank you very much for this opportunity. You're doing great.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we have one more up here at the front. Thank you.
I don't know if this is the right time in the agenda to do this, but I might as well do it. I have a written statement here. APS plays a vital role, not only in our students' scholastic education, but also in their physical development. As a math teacher, swim coach, and former dean of students, I've had the privilege of seeing firsthand how both areas shape young lives. Unfortunately, New Mexico holds a troubling distinction. We are among the top five states in the nation for drownings per capita, according to the CDC. These tragedies often go unreported because families understandably experience deep guilt and grief, especially when access to swim instruction is limited by a lack of public facilities. To change this, we must expand our community's capacity for aquatic education. Swimming is unique among sports. It's not merely recreational or competitive, it's a life-saving skill. Yet, the Northeast Heights has gone without a public aquatic facility for over 20 years. The North Domingo Baca Aquatic Senator, Center represents a long-overdue step toward addressing this need. Albuquerque Public Schools has already demonstrated leadership by contributing $2 million to help launch the project. A contribution that definitely deserves recognition and gratitude. However, APS's funding currently represents, represents only about 4% of the total cost of the facility, despite the fact that the district will be one of the primary beneficiaries of the facility once it's completed. So I urge APS to consider an additional investment to help bring this project to completion. Together, we can make New Mexico a safer, healthier, and more vibrant place for our students, both in and out of the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, I don't think anybody else wants to share it this time, so I'd like to turn it back to CFO, Albedaka, to share the results of a survey asking the same question. Let's see if we had similar answers.
Thank you. So earlier in the month, APS launched a survey to see what priorities the stakeholders had. So thank you for sharing your priorities. So I want to share with you what other APS stakeholders told us. APS gathered input from parents, staff, and community to help guide district budget decisions. The survey was anonymous and included 10 questions on APS Connect. on APS connection, grade level focus, budget rankings, and open-ended feedback. We received more than 5,300 responses, of which 47% were parents or guardians, 41% were APS employees, and 9% represented both. There was limited participation from students and also the broader community. We had six different categories. You can see the categories there on the left-hand side. Safety and security, curriculum and instruction, student support and wellbeing, facilities and infrastructure, professional development and staff support, technology and innovation. And then we had like an overall general budget priority. Within safety and security, school safety for staff was very important, 41.2%. In curriculum and instruction, engaging and relevant curriculum and instructional materials was a top priority. In student support, counseling, mental health supports for students. In facilities and infrastructure, heating and cooling, so our HVAC. Professional development, classroom management. In technology, STEM-related technology. And then overall, safety and security is most important. Now, I'd like to turn it back to board member to share a budget activity.
Okay, we're going to do a budgeting exercise. So, you discussed your priorities, and we shared the priorities that rose from the survey. Now, we want to understand how you, as a community, would further prioritize and rank the options. We are going to take you through a budgeting exercise that helps us dig deeper and allows us to observe the way the community prioritizes the use of funds. This will help us understand the importance of each priority, and we will be able to use this information as we develop the FY '27 budget. The numbers we are using don't exactly add up to the real budget, but they will give you a sense of the trade-offs and decision-making that's involved. Each table gets $100. $40 is already allocated to staff salaries. 10 is allocated to utilities. The remainder is for the priorities identified in the community survey or any of the priorities you identified at your table. You can go ahead and start the activity now. Okay. Oh, okay. So, next slide, please. Okay. To help with the decision-making, here are the 10 priorities from the survey. They include the top six we shared with you, plus a few more that were ranked high. Of course, if you have different priorities, you may budget for them as well. Just estimate how much they may cost. And we'll take about 10 minutes for this activity. Certainly. Can we go to the previous slide, please? We've had a request from the audience. Thank you. Sure. And we've had a request to switch to the next slide that shows the top 10 priorities and the numbers budgeted for each. Thank you. Cutting edge. Yep. I get it. Let's see where we're at. Okay, we'll take about a minute and a half, and then we'll start sharing. I think, I mean, it's no different from what they're looking at right now. Okay, we're going to start to share after we discuss the table discussion questions, which are on the next slide. There we go. So, now that you have had some time to think about allocating your funds, we'd like you to discuss some of these questions. Prioritization and trade-offs. Which priorities did your team choose to fund first and why? What did you have to leave out or fund less? And how did you decide where to allocate the limited resources? Equity and impact. How did your team consider the needs of different students or schools when making allocations? Did you try to balance resources across programs or focus on a few areas with the biggest impact? Finally, reflection and realism. Looking at your allocation, what surprised you about the process? Did your priorities align with what you expected, or did the exercise change your thinking about the district budget? We will ask one spokesperson from each table to share your team's reflections and key takeaways with the larger group. And if there are any students in the room, we'd like to hear from you first. If you feel comfortable. Oh, I see one right there. Okay. Wait, so. So, just talk about your decision. How did you decide what to spend money on?
I put $4 towards fine arts, because art's a very fun subject, in my opinion. I put $6 to counseling and mental health, because there was this kid in my class a little while ago, but she left. She would throw chairs and didn't know how to express her emotions, so she would go to our counselor, Mr. Jacob. I, wait, what is that one?
It's like the AC.
I put $20 to AC, because it's hard to work in a, like, hot or cold classroom.
And we split that across two years.
I split it across two years. I put $5 towards building maintenance. Wait, what is building maintenance?
That was the intercom.
Because our intercom wasn't working, so we had announcements on our, like, Bermethian board. Wait, what does that say?
That's your sweaty pizza.
I put $5 towards better lunches, because I've noticed that my friend Nemesis, she, um... Yes, her name's Nemesis, but she's not my nemesis.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Because she's vegetarian, and they have vegetarian options, but she doesn't enjoy lunches, and they always have sweaty pizza. And everybody's excited for that.
What about this one? This is mine.
Um, she put $10 to college career, and I don't know why.
$10 for students coming out of college really ready for life, or coming out of high school really ready for the next step in life. Good job. Yes, very good job. What is your name? And what grade are you in?
I'm Emma Kadesh.
Thank you, Emma. That was fantastic. So, we heard what Emma wants, so I hope the district's listening. It's very important. Okay, spokespeople at the other tables. Somebody who maybe hasn't participated yet. Want to come out of their shell. Tell us what they want to spend the money on. Thank you. I mean, Emma is a tough act to follow. I get that.
My name's Crystal. I'm supporting my kiddo at Sunset View Elementary. And we here at my table decided to do less on heating and cooling, because we feel like if the buildings were maintained properly, maybe we can get the HVAC systems to last a little longer. We did find it surprising that some of the monies were already allocated for other things, which made it a little bit harder to split the monies. I understand now why this exercise is important, because at first I was like, this is kind of silly. But now I see that if there's already money is allocated, then you kind of have your hands tied, and there's not a lot you can do with the other things. So, it opened my eyes as far as budget in that sense. But we did split $5 to counseling and mental health for the kiddos. We feel like that's important. And then, some of the categories you guys had up there, I think, were kind of redundant. Like, some could have fell under security and maintenance, and that. So, I feel like some of those could have been tied together. So, we did the best we could with what we had left over. So, we did $15 for heating and cooling instead of 40. We did $20 towards professional development for teachers, which I feel is important. If the teachers are paid well and they're motivated to come to work, then our kiddos will get better education, training. I volunteer a lot in the class, and I see that everything is fast-paced. The kiddos, if one kid acts out in the class, well, guess what? Their whole day is now thrown off, and they're missing assignments, because the teacher has to stop and get the kiddo to calm down or not. So, and then we did $10 for student and family services, because we feel like that's important. But I also feel like that can fall under counseling and mental health, too. So, we did the best we could with what we got left over. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. It's a good lesson there.
Hi, my name's Miriam Frisch. I'm a student teacher at La Cueva. So, our table talked about a whole lot of different things, not necessarily in the order of importance, but just the way I wrote them down. First, we have heating and cooling. We allocated $28, but that's kind of up for debate. We didn't quite get through. But that's just a basic necessity for teachers and students alike. You can't work in an environment where you're uncomfortable. And then, $6 for post-secondary education and preparation. $6 for mental health services and counseling. $6, well, this is kind of the same as what you had said, that we kind of combined the school security and campus security and the fences and stuff like that. So, $6 for school security, $4 for campus security and infrastructure. And I believe that that is it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other tables want to share?
We don't really have anything specific in terms of numbers, so it's really good to hear. And we didn't get that far, but I think what came out of our discussion was there were a lot of priorities and possibly them being tied together and cutting them in half and saying that there are five. And then, of course... And then, of course, those five have to be digested, I guess, or dissected, not digested, dissected and then digested, but bring it down to five. And I think if you're looking at a, maybe a business environment or a corporation, I think that's what they're going to do. They're going to bring it down. They're not going to have 10, 20, 30 priorities. They're going to try and bring it down to as little as they can and really concentrate and focus on those. But of course, there are subcategories within each of those priorities that you have to address, but that's kind of what we came up with.
Does anybody else want to share what they came up with at their table? Or, because we have some time, is there something you absolutely do not want the money spent on? If anybody wants to share that? Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but I'd be curious. Okay. Thank you. So now we are on to share your thoughts on the APS budget. We want to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard. Please take a few minutes to share your thoughts and priorities with us. You can do this by filling out a short form using the QR code on the screen, or by, or by posting on the easel pad. Either way, your input really matters to us. And so the easel pad, I think, means, right, it's right there, and with the sticky notes that are on the tables. If you want to write your priorities and your input and put it on the easel, we'd love to have it, or use the QR code. It looks like the QR code's working for everyone. Wonderful. You can write your input on the sticky note as well and put it on the board over there. That's still an option. Thank you, Board President Gonzalez, for using the pad and the sticky note. It was not put there in vain. Thank you, David. Okay, is everybody pretty much done putting in their information into the QR code? I know the sticky notes are on the board. We're done there. Okay, I think we are ready to move on to what happens next. I know you all are so curious about what happens next. So, thank you all for taking the time to go through that exercise and share your thoughts. We know it's not easy to make tough choices when resources are limited, but your conversations tonight really help us understand what matters most to you, our community. Everything you shared will be collected and reviewed by district leadership as we begin building next year's budget. We'll look for themes, compare them to what we've heard in other sessions, and use that input to make the tough decisions. Your voice truly makes a difference in shaping where APS invests its resources, so thank you for being a part of this process. I'm going to share what happens next in the budget process that's up on the slide. There's a review of the Legislative Finance Committee and Legislative Education Finance Committee Outlook data, and that will be in December 2025. The legislative session begins January 20th of '26. School and department budget development begins February and goes through March 2026. The legislative session ends in February 19th of '26. FY27 final budget is presented to the Board of Education for approval in March of '26. And finally, the APS budget is submitted to New Mexico Public, the New Mexico Public Education Department on April 15th of next year. Any questions about the timeline? Wonderful. So now we're moving on to how to stay informed. This is a long process, and we want you to keep in touch. Please attend or livestream board meetings. They're on the APS Board of Education YouTube, and meeting information, if you want to attend in person, which we always encourage, is online. Submit questions or comments to aps.edu/contact-us or board@aps.edu, or call the number 505-880-3729. There are many ways to contact us. Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you over and over throughout this process. So thank you for being here this evening. We are here to answer questions as we close up, but we value your input, we value your participation, and we value each of you very much. Thank you.